... o'clock, I'd like to call our meeting to order if everyone would stand. Do we need to stand for the pledge again?
Sure.
All right, let's stand for the pledge. So prior to our session this evening, we had a joint meeting with the Clarence Town Board. It was well attended. Just want to make note of that for the record. As far as we'll call, Mr. Boglioli will not be in attendance this evening. Everyone else is present. Do we have any announcements before moving forward? So if I could have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening? Make a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
All right, so in our packet, we have the meeting minutes and the executive session from our July reorganizational and public meeting. If there's no questions, can I get a motion to approve that meeting from July fifteenth?
Summer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. We have no correspondence this evening. This brings us to the first public comment session for this evening of two. If anybody has anything at this time, if you'd like to approach the microphone. Okay. All right, we'll move on. Next section is unfinished business. Is there anything that any board member has for unfinished business at this time? Dr. Hicks, no superintendent's report tonight?
No report tonight, Mr. Kerry.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Mancuso, finances.
Sure, we have a few items tonight. You have the June financial reports, and I just wanted to note that the Lumsen McCormick external auditors were in. They did all their field work. They go back to the office, they start putting things together. They always go to material items first to see if there's any entries that we need to do before we close our books. There were none, which is always a good sign. And they should have a draft for the audit committee prior to the, just prior to the September board meeting. And then at the October board meeting, we will ask the Board of Education for acceptance of the external audit. The, just time you get those questions along the way, but I'll just continue then. So the next item is the free and reduced lunch program. Every year, we have to reauthorize the program, which sets up income levels for people to get free or reduced meals. And if you remember, the reduced meal is always twenty-five percent, or twenty-five cents per meal. And that's still the same at the federal level, but New York State is now covering that. So anybody who qualifies at either the free or reduced level will receive a free meal. We recalibrated all of the cashier stations to do that. Next item that we have is port one establishment of the tax rates for the new school year. When we had our budget newsletter out last year, we estimated that the tax, average tax rate would not be above thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. And it came in lower at thirteen dollars and ninety cents. Now, that's an average rate. We do have the four towns, and we have varying equalization rates as low as seventy-seven and as high as one hundred. So actually, the majority of our school district, obviously, is the town of Clarence. That rate is as low as thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Next item that we have is cooler replacement for the Clarence Center and the high school. We put bids out for these items, and the food service program is beneficial to us as far as recovering funds for new equipment. As we had touched base before, the high school configuration is being updated, and now we do have additional funds for two new coolers. We do have three very old, very beat-up vehicles from the buildings and grounds department, tractor and lawn mowers, that we would like to dispose of. We will put, with your approval tonight, we will put bids out for these and then accept the highest bidder.
I noticed you didn't list an estimated value for the nineteen eighty John Deere tractor.
Yes, if you have a flatbed and you want to take it home, it probably isn't going to get anything. And then, once we go through the process, we could dispose of it. Another important item for tonight is every year, Board of Education has to re-approve the district-wide safety plan. The plan has been on the district's website in draft mode for public comment for over thirty days, as is required. We didn't receive any comments on that. The plan is pretty much the same as it's been the last year or two, once some of the regulations have changed. One of the addendums to the safety plan this year is putting attachment for the SRO agreements. And the SRO agreements have to have certain stipulations in there. One of them was that they are not allowed to discipline students. But we had that in our original agreement, and so our agreement appears to be fine the way it is. We vet this through the BOSI's attorneys, who assist us with the safety plan.
So there was really no changes to the document, just the formality of attaching it?
Yes. And the last item, we did have three transportation contracts last year. Two of them, we are going to be able to absorb and take over this year ourselves. One of them, and it's just an afternoon run, we don't have the appropriate staff to handle this one. So we want to contract that one out. And the other two, by reapproving them at a zero amount, allows us down the road, should a student at one of those places come in, and we don't have the facility, the wherewithal to do it, we then can contract. That contract would still be brought to the Board of Education, but the state approval is quickened this way. That's it for this section.
Rick, just a quick comment or question. I know that the transportation, the audit district, can you talk to the state aid that we get back from that particular expense?
Yes, so the contracts for transportation are pretty much aided at that rate of two dollars state, one dollar local. Now, the contracts do have a lot of caveats as far as, you know, you have to bid them appropriately, you have to award them at a Board of Education meeting, and you have to have solid reasons why you're doing them. For this contract, all of those are met, so we will get two out of every three dollars back approximately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mancuso? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the financial section, items F-one to F-eight?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Instructional, Mr. Michelle?
Yes, we have a resignation from a club position, various appointments, two probationary teachers, a psychologist, and three regular subs for the upcoming year. We also have appointments that have updated recommendations for fall sports, extracurricular appointments for CHS and CMS that does contain the unified that was moved from the last board meeting to this one. Some additional summer work, TCI training compensation, and also proctoring and scoring names for compensation from the high school, summer school. We have the approval of mentors for the upcoming school year, approval of faculty members to serve for the CSE summer meetings, some presentation compensation, a request for summer and fall curriculum projects from Mrs. Overholt, an additional day for summer guidance, the approval of the substitute rate for the upcoming school year. Currently, on our sub list that we're putting before you, we have over one hundred and thirty subs for the upcoming year. Resolution to extend the contract of Dr. Hicks, and also a resolution to approve the evaluators for the APR. There's an added addendum. The addendum deletes one of the regular subs that was on the original board packet. She's accepted a position in another district. An additional activity advisor appointment, one addition to the summer work, and the recommendation for our new curriculum coordinator and chief information officer. And Ms. Shaibi is in attendance this evening.
Any questions on the instructional portion of the agenda? Seeing no questions, can I get a motion to approve P-one to P-nine? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Welcome. All right, non-instructional, please.
Non-instructional, we have a series of resignations, one particular for Mr. Belko for retirement purposes. One change in status, it's an increase in hours for one of our bus drivers. Some requests for leave and extension of leaves of absence, one return to active employment. And there are ten appointments with various categories, teacher aides, cleaners, et cetera. Approval of summer appointments for aides, monitors, and the transportation offices. Substitute list for non-instructional titles, and a resolution to change the rate of pay for our non-instructional staff to always be at the beginning level as outlined in the CSEA contract. The addendum has a list of seven teacher aides. It was a busy afternoon trying to get everyone in place, and one clerk typist. Approval for one additional summer employee to be added to the list so that they could be compensated, and two additions to the teacher aide sub list.
Lot of hiring.
Lot of hiring today.
Any questions on non-instructional?
I just, one quick question. Were we able to use the call-in system for non-instructional?
Yes, they will, they will be using the call-in system this upcoming school year.
No other questions, can I get a motion to approve items P-ten to P-seventeen?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Aye, carries. Special needs and student activities, Dr. Hicks?
A very large agenda for the Committee on Special Education, which includes all of the leftover meetings from April all the way through the summer. So two hundred and fifty-seven different meetings for the board approval, and then thirteen preschool meetings. Runs the gamut of every single special ed service and placement throughout the district.
Addendum to that one.
And an addendum as well. Thank you, Rick.
There's no questions, can I get a motion to approve items S-one and S-two? Do I have a second? All those in favor? Aye, carries. All right, board development.
I'm sorry.
We have Board of Ed policy seventy-five eleven.
Right. Before we jump into that, Sheila's getting my attention.
Okay.
What did I forget, Sheila? Oh, we're at, it's really not an approval item, I think it's just informational? Is it on the agenda? Okay. What we would ask, we had to change one of our superintendent conference days in the calendar to correspond with Election Day. Everyone knows about it. It was in the calendar that was printed that people put on their refrigerators. But just to make it official, we'd ask the board to approve that change in the calendar tonight.
Is that moving it from another day, or it's an addition?
Originally, it was October eleventh. It's now moved to November fifth.
Any questions on that change, concerns? And that is on all the printed material that the parents have received?
It's on the website, it's on all the printed materials.
So can I get a motion to approve the formal change of the calendar reflecting the superintendent's conference day moving from October eleventh to Election Day? And a second? All those in favor? Aye, carries.
Okay. Now, the two policies that are for board consideration tonight. The first is on immunizations. New York State has created a statutory law that requires students to be immunized without a religious exemption. So the state has taken away the religious exemption for immunizations. We have notified our parents, in order for their children to come to school, they have to at least have the first dose of the immunizations and is scheduled to get the rest of them. The first two weeks of school is kind of a gratis period, and then after that, unless you're immunized, you cannot attend school, or you cannot ride on the school bus, or you cannot attend a private school as well. So this change in the policy comports with the law. Could you describe that, please, Rick?
Yes, and, you know, the policy talks about medical exemptions and religious exemptions. So really, the policy, we're just removing the one paragraph that allows religious exemptions, as that is no longer valid.
The statute would always trump policy, so it's easier for us to just to clean the policy up by removing the words "religious exemption", since that's the de facto law anyway.
So I was, I was going to ask that. I mean, regardless of what we do, the law is the law.
Right.
The policy, it trumps the policy.
And we just certainly thought, because it could be a hot topic issue, we thought it'd be a good idea to change the policy too, so somebody doesn't see something on our website.
And then typically, we have a first read and then a vote, so we'll need a motion to waive the first read, or can we just go to approve?
I think you can make a motion just to vote.
Yeah, you could make a motion just to approve this change, if you would like.
But we'd recommend that you approve it tonight.
Change in policy? The general protocol is that we have at least a first read before we do a vote, but we have the ability to waive that procedural step and vote the first evening. That allows us to waive the policy? I can't point to the specific policy, but I can tell you relative to this or any other policy that we have on the books, if the state passes a law, it doesn't matter what our policy says, the state trumps the local policy. We can't have a policy that conflicts with the state law. So given where we're at with what the state has enacted here with their spring session, and the language change that they've enacted, does anybody have an issue with updating our policy this evening? If not, I would need a motion to approve the change to Board of Ed policy seventy-five eleven? Do I have a second?
No, second.
All those in favor? Aye, carries.
So just to bring the board up to date, there is one pending lawsuit that is challenging religious exemptions. The judge, all of the arguments have been made. The judge in Albany has the information. The judge promised to make a ruling prior to the beginning of the school year. If the judge puts forward a stay of the law or increases the timeline, then we will follow the law. Okay, just so that everybody knows. On our website, we have all of the immunization information, and we will post the judge's ruling as soon as it, hopefully, it will happen. She's got a couple of days before school starts.
Time is running out.
Okay, the second element is just for your consideration and discussion tonight. There's been a debate about the athletic placement policy, which essentially would allow seventh and eighth graders to participate in freshman JV and modify, or freshman JV and varsity sports. What we've provided the board as far as background information is the actual commissioner's regulation that allows for seventh and eighth graders to play up. We have also provided the current policy language. The current policy for Clarence only allows eighth graders to participate, and it does not allow participation in JV or freshman sports. Then, we gave you a couple of samples. One where school districts just reference the commissioner's regulations. One where you are allowed to put additional criteria on the commissioner's regulations. And then, thanks to Jason Lembeck, thank you, Jason, we provided the sample language for some local school districts to give you a context. So those, that's all the backup information that we had. We're happy to answer any additional questions. I'm sure Jason could answer any additional questions from the audience as well.
And I guess just to level set on where we are in discussions, we've had a number of meetings where parents have come to voice their concerns with the existing policy and desires to have us reconsider some of the language that is in place. And Clarence is the only district that is not closely following, if not directly following, state guidance. So we've heard those requests. We've gathered some information. We have more of it in the packet this evening. We've had the opportunity with Mr. Lembeck to share some of his perspectives in prior positions, as well as what he's witnessed thus far with Clarence, although in short tenure, a busy one. So our commitment at the last meeting was to go back and research. And while we were not going to be doing anything to enact any changes, if we even do so, prior or in time for the fall athletics, that we would entertain discussions. If we are going to change anything, to do so one way or another before the winter sports season, which would, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Hicks, would require us to make a change at the October meeting to be effective for the November first period.
Right, is it November first for winter sports, Jason? I think that still falls before our next board meeting, so.
Our next November meeting, so.
Yeah, I'd say to be safe, October would be the kind of drop-dead date.
Correct, so, so one of the major items, we've heard from those that desire a change, currently have not heard or made those aware, other members of the athletic community aware that we are even considering this, and make sure that they have an opportunity to speak to us and know that we are actually entertaining some discussion here. So with that said, we'll have, I'll open it up to the floor here in a moment, but we do have, our next meeting is on September sixteenth at Clarence Center at seven o'clock. For those that wish to speak on the matter, we'll be, we'll be listening to any community input there, as well as discuss, further discussions with the board members directly. So with that, does anybody have any questions, comments? I know we had an opportunity to be educated earlier.
I just want to make sure that we do allow everyone the opportunity and make them aware of this possible change prior to voting.
So just as a point of clarity, at the parent athletic meetings next week, am I correct that you'll be making them aware of this? Oh, it's Wednesday this week, yes. Thank you. And then, is there, is there a vehicle to make, because this would impact, obviously, seventh, eighth graders or nobody, but consideration, the middle school parents aware of this as well through modified? Is there a similar meeting?
So modified season starts a little later?
Modified starts today.
Okay.
Okay, they'll be there as well. Excellent, all right, thank you.
I think we're covered.
Any questions from the board, comments? So we do have a public comment session now. If you'd like to address the board, the microphone is yours.
Hello, my name is Sybil Robbins. I've lived in the Clarence District for the past couple of years. I moved back into the Buffalo area, which is home. Actually, I grew up in the South Towns, and I have two kids. I have one just starting middle school, and I have another one at Clarence Center in fourth grade. So I'm here to talk about the law that was made a law, the bill became a law, all in one day on June thirteenth. Many of you guys may be familiar of it, especially with the policy that you just recently approved. I also want to clarify that at the moment, there are two existing lawsuits, one at a federal level and one at the state level that Michael Sussman is leading. There are another three that are coming. Two will be put into, in the court system tomorrow or Wednesday. And this is about initially getting a stay on the law. But I also wanted to just give that update before I come with my ask. I come with my ask because this law was put in place so fast. And it was put into place on June thirteenth. What it had in there was implemented immediately. I know you guys aren't, maybe you are some parents of some preschool kids or daycare kids, but that law was effective for them within two weeks. For any special education students that had summer programs, that law was impacted within two weeks after them going to school. A lot of children around the state have opted not to go to school at all over the summer to protect their religious exemptions. So they gave us, the state gave us merely seventy-five days until when the normal school year started to say, how is this going to impact your life, and what decisions are you going to need to make? Are you going to move from the community that you love, that you contribute to? Are you going to stay at home and homeschool and figure out what the heck is a curricula, and how do I find a curricula for every single subject out there? And also, we have to think about some of these parents, because they are single moms, and I am a single mom, right? They have to figure out, what are they going to do? Are they going to compromise their religious beliefs, or are they going to figure out some other way? So I'm asking you as a human, as a parent, as somebody that is, feels for other people, that the board and the superintendents really look at this and write a letter on the behalf of the students. And I know there's, I only know probably a dozen other families that are impacted in Clarence. I don't know how many there are, because, you know, I'd love to send a letter to all of them, so I can give them all a hug, because we're all going through this crazy thing together. And I really, I'm really asking the board, because there's a Board of Regents meeting on September ninth, to say, we care about our students, we care about those that are impacted. The plastic bag law was put into effect, but, you know, they care more about plastic bags, because they're going to put that into effect next year than they do about kids. So we're asking that you write a letter to the Board of Education, for the state, and to the Board of Regents, and ask them to delay the implementation, because we care about students. We care about these families. We care about these big decisions they have to make. I mean, it takes, what, six, eight, nine months to try to find a job out of state, if that's really what they have to do, if they have to leave this gorgeous community that we have here? I mean, I love living in Clarence Center, and it's a decision that, you know, we, none of us want to make. So I really would like, I have two letters here from other superintendents that they've written. One was from East Islip, and another one is written from Baldensville, a little closer. So we got one on the island and one in Syracuse area. And both of these, these superintendents, you know, they, they understand that the challenges that the parents have, and I'm happy to leave them with you, so that you have these copies, so that you can see the ask. I mean, we're not saying do not follow the law, because obviously, you guys have to follow the law. We're just asking for more time. We're asking more time to make the right decisions for our families.
Thank you. I think we're happy to take the letters and read over them. Did you say they were directed at the Board of Regents or the legislature?
Both of these letters here were written directly to Judge Hartman for the Sussman case. But they're asking, they're asking for them to be written to, to the Board of Regents, because they have the power to say, look, we want these families and these children the opportunity to have the best education possible. So if it's in the public schools, it's in the public schools. So we'd like that opportunity to be, at least so that we can mull it out and figure it out. Seventy-five days is not a lot of time to figure out a curricula for your kids, and to try to pull all those curriculums in and say, how does my kid learn? And how am I going to homeschool? And how am I going to do that? And how do I get support? And as a single mom, it's a hard decision.
Thank you.
You have any questions for me?
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments for the public comment session at this time? Seeing none. Next item in our packet, we have a schedule of upcoming meetings and events. Freshman orientation and various kickoff events begin this week. First day of school, Wednesday, September fourth, followed by a myriad of open houses. We will hope that the weather and the cool weather holds and prevails for those events. The next scheduled meeting, as I mentioned previously, is September sixteenth, and it will be located at Clarence Center Elementary, so please note that, that different location. If no other comments, I entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussing matters leading to the employment of a particular person. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? All those in favor? Or adjourn. Thank you.